Okay.
Well, I'm just gonna make a comment that I think, you know, what a phenomenal new program to offer. Um, I think that, you know, obviously I see to my own kids over the summertime, they their reading skills go down. Try as I might to get them to read constantly if they don't. Um, but, uh, how wonderful I am and I'm really proud of you both for for doing that. And it will also be very interesting to hear back the the feedback from the teacher teachers about how the kids coming in have, you know, their preparation and if it's a noticeable change, which I would just.
Thank you.
Dean, and then Jeff.
Oh, okay. How much in terms of classes offered or anticipated number of student enrollments? How much are we up now as over two or three years ago, so?
I'd have to go back and look in terms of numbers of students for two to three years ago. I will tell you that just last year at Glacial Drummond, we had four hundred and nine, four hundred and ninety-one students participating in summer school in the would have been four K through five grade band at Glacial Drummond School. But beyond that, I'd have to go back and look at the look at the actual numbers for far years to compare.
And maybe Jared needs to chime in on this. Is 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 summer school a drain on school resources or do we make money on the?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say that it's a drain on our resources. It's definitely an opportunity for us to look at receiving some additional aid and some additional revenue. So this last year, we did see a decrease in our FTEs, our revenue. So we did see a decrease in the amount of money that we're collecting from that. But really, when you're looking at summer school, it adds sixty-three students to our overall revenue limit. So we're able to collect additional sixty-three students worth of revenue through our property tax and state aid. So that part of it does pretty much, it is a break even program. You can look at it different different ways. When we collect state aid from the states, they don't break it out. What's you getting for summer school, what are you getting at? So it's as a district.
Under the FTE thing?
Yeah, but on the FTE, we are getting, if we didn't offer summer school, we wouldn't have additional sixty students in our FTE counts.
So so what I what I hear you saying is that if 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 we doubled summer school the year after this, that that by and large, it's break even.
Yes, so it takes three years for us to get the full count of an FTE. But if we start increasing our FTEs there, that also helps pay for the program.
Okay, so so my half of my first statement is not true. It's not a drain on resources at all, and it's a benefit. And then my question to you is that why? Is there some constraint on why we cannot offer? I'd like to see the breakdown between remediation and and that sort of thing.
Sure.
And and other opportunities that we have in summer school. I I I think it's, I think it's quite an opportunity to close that summer gap. It would seem to me, and particularly as you and Debbie, you were talking about the reading literacy and math kinds of issues. And as you know, since I've been here, I'm I've always wanted to get the summer school going. Then the other question is, uh, is there any opportunity to get some of the, particularly in high school, get some of the advanced courses? And that sort of thing? Or because we've added to graduation requirements and and there's expectations, greater expectations for college admission and that sort of thing. And then we also have a very active music and other programs. And it seems to me that, uh, that our summer school, I think you're moving in the right direction. I think the summer school ought to move the next step or two away from simply remediation or that type of thing to maybe offering an AP course or two. And that sort of thing, which because the students that that will take those AP courses also have full loads of other things because they're actively engaged in in school. And and I I'm certainly glad that you have a lot of athletic opportunities, I'm sure, and and music opportunities and so forth. But I would like to see it grow incrementally each year personally. And and to broaden the course so that our students, when they go back to school in the fall next year, that they will have more electives available to them rather than less because they might be able to take some required courses and other things in the summer school.
I can tell you about two things we've done just in the past year that I think speak to your points. One was in the past for, and this will be about remedial programming, academic support programming. We used to have a limit of eight students per grade level per site who could receive reading support, eight students who could receive math support. So last year, we changed that. And we approached summer school with the idea of we just need to know who needs support. We'll figure out a way to staff the classes and make that happen. But there should not be a limit on, because what about the ninth student who also needs help who wasn't on the list? So that's the first thing we changed last year, and we'll continue to do that. When we brought forward our our recommendation for the personal financial literacy requirement, alternative means of meeting that requirement were part of the conversation. I think summer plays into that as well. And then in terms of electives, although we haven't, not if haven't done, we haven't done this at the high school level. But at the middle school and elementary levels, we've introduced robotics classes using Lego Robotics curriculum with our tech ed folks here. We're building on that for, we did, we brought that in at the middle level two years ago. Last year, we extended that to three through through fifth grade grade band. And the intent there is, one of the things there that I think is very important is to provide some some more STEM experiences for kids in an early age and get them some exposure to engineering and technology that that really might spark an interest as they move through their upper grades.
Well, when you mentioned the financial literacy, I would think that would be a good one for summer session because that frees up a semester elective for a student that when the menu is bigger for them at the high school, they they can choose those electives.
And it makes it easier for AP or other things, yeah.
And I I I don't know, what do we what do we need to do to get acclamation by this board that we want to move in that direction? Yeah, I think it'd be good.
Well, I I think when they, when we talked, when we, at the time we approved that course, that question was raised, and the course has to be developed first, so I'm not sure, I don't think we could expect it this summer. But I would probably expect that that might be a possible offering next summer after this. I mean, I I don't know that we need that board.
I can tell you, our administration is committed to continually to expand summer school with, towards the concept of your own school. And as you heard from Jared, right now, the way the funding is, is basically pays for itself, which is great. So the more we expand, the revenue will be there and and, but I think we need to do it incrementally. One of the first steps this year was getting, using the sites, so the students are at their buildings. The fact we have air conditioning in Cottage Grove School now is huge, so we can use all of our buildings. And there, you know, so I think looking at it K-12, you know, we certainly have focused on the literacy in the elementary, which is huge. But I agree, in the high school, there's a lot of opportunities there also.
I just want to say that I think something like this are the kind of targets I would like to see.
Yeah.
On it, and to have what you're talking about incrementally growing it, I think would be would be excellent. And I'd like to see the curriculum, as I said, get more into the mainstream rather than on the, what I'd call the pure elective or the remediation purgatory.
Okay, and then Jeff.
So are we gonna, are there gonna be more offerings this year?
There'll be some. We're expanding the the STEM offerings this year. I'm working with the same team that developed the robotics course to to bring some more offerings forward for this year. We're gonna be working with also the middle school staff on some some alternative offerings there that'll be able to bring forward, I think. But the, I think the big change you'll see in programming won't necessarily be with with a new offering for elementary reading and math, but a change in the way the curriculum is designed there. With Deb's role as assistant director for literacy, we'll be able to coordinate that, I think, much more effectively than we have in the past. And hopefully make that more effective.
And the signup can be the same as this, oh, is it?
Um, the online registration system we put in place last year got good reviews. And we want, we're keeping that system in place, so that's.
My blood pressure didn't sky.
That was good.
That is our system.
Yeah.
When when is that signup?
Um, we'll have that in mid, we're finalizing the date on that, but it'll be in mid-April, I think, from the same time of the year.
Yeah, love summer school. And I can't wait till we go to after, or after school, Carrie, too. But is there some concern, I understand why you want to do it in the building. Is there some concern about the 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 parents with multiple building kids?
There is, and one of the things we'll do is stagger the start times at the different buildings so that we have an ability to move for for parents to take their kids to the buildings, a time to move in between.
Because it's not a full day anymore.
Right.
And it, and you don't have a bus.
Right.
So you like almost have to make two trips. Since you dropped the third one, I'll go back and get the first one.
Right, and we have had some very preliminary discussions on how might we be able to support kids with transportation needs? If that's an absolute barrier to participation in summer school, particularly for students who need support, what might we be able to do? We don't have anything firm just yet, but we're investigating that very seriously.
A couple are there over here, and then Jessica, then Susan, and Dean.
No, actually.
Barbara, go ahead.
Um, actually, Dean asked almost all my questions. I guess then what that boils down to for me is, once you start to put your programming in place, I would really appreciate you coming back and giving us a five-minute update on that. Because truly in the past, when we had, when when we had summer school programs, we had a strong academic program. And for example, the financial literacy we talked about, which is a perfect way to segue into that, we taught some of the advanced high school math programming, those optional ones. When there's only room for one section, like they want to take astronomy and they can do it in the summer. And the other thing we did was we taught the advanced math programming from the middle school. So if you had a student that wanted to accelerate into the advanced math program and hadn't, they could using, do you remember that, the summer school program? So kids in eighth grade who hadn't taken geometry in eighth grade could take it that summer before they went into, there was a whole section of them before they went into high school. And then they had to test out before they could actually move into the next class. But, um, and then one of the things I'm going to talk about tonight is Bear Boo's focus on kind of advanced programming and their commitment to that and the way that they've been able to do that. What they actually did was they paired with, actually, Whitewater, who came in and trained the teachers to teach the advanced programs. So I would encourage you guys to continue to really look at that as an important part of our program because five years ago, our kids have been trying to go to mass in schools in the summer because they offer the programs that we taught. So I would encourage you to do that, thank you.
Sure.
Then Jessica, and then back to Dean.
Well, I just have a very simple question, kind of to Dean's end. But that, are there plans also to then build in mathematics support for that K through six crowd as well?
Oh, we have math, we have math support as well. But you mean in August, in the August piece? Yes, absolutely.
And I'm assuming you're just gonna start with literacy and if it's a success to move to math.
And build that in.
Yeah, wonderful, that's so great to hear, it's really good. All right, and I am equally, I share Dean's thoughts too on offering more coursework for us, for other learners at the high school as well. But I mean, especially to get our youngest population ready to get back into school. I know teachers always say that, you know, that first month is just like, you know, herding cats around. So it'll be great.
Thank you. This is a thought in my mind, too, is that if you went and got data from the high school, I'm thinking of the high school piece right now, and there's oversubscription to some of the courses. Or there are lab courses that have twenty-seven people in it and there's only twenty-four spaces. It seems to me those are prime, prime type of car, targets that could help reduce class size issues. Second que, that's a state, the question is, is it hard to get teachers to teach in summer?
Um, it's been, last year, we were able to increase the pay rate for summer school teachers, and we saw a noticeable increase in our applicants for summer school positions. So I would say, you know, I have not been working in summer school for a terribly long time, but just that change in itself pretty helped us, and we didn't have trouble staffing our classes last year.
Okay, so what it, what it is, is that summer school pay has been not attractive compared to regular year pay.
Right.
And that, closing that gap has helped.
It has.
Okay, good.
Question. Because that that has been a historic problem. Any other comments or questions?
Uh, is there significant, excuse me, significant cost difference in opening additional sites?
I don't believe so. If we, no, there should be any other than, I mean, utilities.
Is there additional supervision or?
Site supervisor, there should actually be a site supervisor. Right, but you know, the big, the change there insofar as personnel is we have now with Deb's position to be able to coordinate, you know, the program. So we'll still have site supervision, but it won't be any additional cost because some of that that was incurred with the coordinating piece. Incorporated to Deb's position.
That was a big cost.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, then on to board reports. And the first board report is the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, Dean.
You're gonna be disappointed tonight because I don't have my one-page summary report. Because I was, I was kept in meetings all day. And and the, there are people at this table who are responsible for that, okay? And, but I've taken up about a minute of my ten already, right?
Okay, talk's for.
Let me just bring you up to date. We had our first meeting, and what do we have, fourteen, fifteen, something like that? I think my judgment is a very, very representative group. We also, our consultant and the committee in kind of a general consensus felt that perhaps we needed to teach a representative and we needed another business representative from Menona. And we got John Quinzing to be the business representative. And Dave Kinsler will will represent, be the teacher representative on the board. Again, my 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 plan to have a seven-member committee where we could talk around a little conference table is now expanded to closer to seventeen, I think, we got maybe fifteen anyway. But I think it's a very good committee. I I thought the first meeting for for kind of getting information that, by and large, I felt everyone was pretty well engaged. What do you think, Carrie? She's on the committee.
I have my binder.
Yeah, look, it's not.
She was, she was. That would be the first meeting, so are you putting that on purpose?
And and Joyce is gonna fill that binder, right, right? Okay, but I I thought we had a pretty good, I thought we had a pretty good meeting. We had a report by, from Vanderall, which not only gave us the information from their report and kind of summarized that for us, but but the representative from Vanderall basically talked to us, not just presenting data, but talked to us in terms of maybe where our needs are. And I would say answered, what did you say, Dan, thirty minutes of questions?
Yeah.
Thirty, thirty-five minutes of questions, which I I think helped direct some of our our next next meetings. And our, the, one of the meetings this afternoon was to deal, work with the consultants and to plan the school, our meetings subsequently at school sites and to plan their meetings to do analysis of capacity and some architectural types of things that might be done to some schools or areas in some schools. And and who to involve in those and some background data and so forth. I I'm, I'm pretty impressed with the group that we have. I think they're they're much engaged and and they ask good questions. And they, then they're listening to the, at least these committee meetings and so forth. They listen very much and they take a lot of, lot of good notes. And so I'm sorry, I don't have my one-page summary that you've been accustomed to, but that'll have to do for tonight.
Jeff?
I haven't actually talked about this, Dean, but something up here. And we've talked about adding some diversity to our group, have we considered that? I have some ideas.
Why don't we, why don't you guys talk after the meeting? I think that'd be.
Let's talk. Yeah, it's nothing secret, but we're.
Right, I'm just thinking, it's not a conversation we have to have right here, right now, but yeah.
Susan?
Um, I just had one quick question. There was, there was a press release that actually came out as well, right? Didn't we get a copy of that? Did that get published? Okay, that was really nice that that was done, I appreciate that. I don't know if you guys did it or.
No, the, well, one of the reasons we chose this firm is that Sarah Dunn, who is on that, I was, I was kind of most impressed with this firm because they had a sense of the communications and PR and not just the architecture and the, you know, the nuts and bolts kind of thing. And and I think, I think I gave a story to the Herald Independent a couple, several weeks ago. But the press releases, the last two, I think, press releases have been produced by them. But, you know, if, I probably could have added another, something more in there. But by and large, I think she's captured the gist that the community, community needs to know where we are.
That's exactly what my thought was, is that I think it's really important that it's all open and transparent. The community is aware that you are doing that research. The only question I had is just for a thought, and I know you as chair, it would be totally up to you. But one of the things that the Menona Grove Education Foundation did when they had the fundraiser, kind of the Mike Stassi roast and honored the grantees, was part of that funding was toward a quote athletic complex. So one of the things I don't clearly see here is someone like a Mike Stassi or a Joe Schuchardt, who has helped through the Fender Arena in working on that area around the high school for good, strong, versatile athletic use, which is another thing we really need to study.
Are you talking, referring to the athletic field complex mostly?
Yes, as well as, the other thing that we've really struggled with is the use of the property around Glacial Drummond and around Taylor Prairie. In fact, we used to hold soccer practices out at Taylor Prairie. So I'm, I'm just saying, when I look at this, it it might be nice to have somebody that has a good, strong background in the student needs for the outdoor field.
Let me take a, let me take a kick at the cat, and Dan could add on to it.
Yeah, I, it's just a, just a thought.
Well, if you recall, the, both the first early press release, as well as my written report last time, outlined the working agenda to the committee. And on the, on that agenda, if you remember, the things that you mentioned here, the athletic facilities at the high school and the various properties that we have, which are across from the high school on, it's Cold Springs, right? On Cold Springs, and we have the Damascus Road property. And there's also the little patch of land that's on Cousin Hill and so forth. That, that's all part of, in fact, this afternoon on that, we we discussed, we discussed that as a part of their agenda. And and I think to get to your second, part of your question is that should the committee have somebody who is knowledgeable and in-depth knowledge of various parts of this work agenda? And and I think the plan is, is that we will be involving the people that that you've identified and others throughout because we have targeted areas there which the committee, by and large, doesn't have intimate knowledge with, that can help us identify what what needs to be done. And if there's athletic facility things, it's very clear that we're going to be involving the maybe some public, but some, certainly some staff people who are well informed on that. I don't know if that's answering your question.
Well, kind of, I just remember when we built the high school, the original plan was one floor and it covered the entire property. At which time knowledgeable, knowledgeable group, including Mike Stassi, came in and said, can you consider a different configuration so that we can maintain minimally physical education facilities? And an athletic room for the kids, at which time they evaluated a second floor and then a third floor, which reopened all that space. But it would have been totally gone if you hadn't advocated that. So when I didn't see a clear, understanding, you and Paul Jeff Schreiner, and I get that. But when you have somebody that is that kind of, you know, like a Joe Schuchardt or Mike Stassi, I'm just suggesting it might be worth thinking about.
Well, oh, well, I I can pretty well assure you that when we get to some of the targeted areas and the athletic facilities is clearly on the, on the work agenda is one of them, that the people involved with that, from Stassi to Schreiner and others
Yep, the other people.
are going to be involved. But if if every issue that we dealt with, with this committee, if we had a, I don't use this pejoratively, a parochial subgroup around each one of those, we'd have a committee of forty.
I'm just looking for one, because I don't see that.
Well, I think, I think the thought was that they would have an interest in the areas that deal with their area, that their their field. There's no reason to bring staff members in for the entire committee to sit through all these meetings. I think that was, that was my understanding, the thought, that they would come in at the appropriate times.
Exactly, and as Dean said, I mean, that's one important area. There's forty important areas that this committee is gonna look at, and the scope of that, that was the determination. The other thing we talked about today is, you know, the architects are gonna be going out and meeting with the individual, you know, with all the buildings. They'll be interviewing the principals, key, you know, teachers, departments, and doing a thorough assessment. So those key people who do have that intimate knowledge, we will be involving them in all those areas. And of course athletics, you're right, is another huge piece. And and so I think that's the approach. As opposed to trying to get expertise on the committee, the committee will go to the experts to get the information.
Jessica, and then Jeff.
I have a question that maybe Dean is not the person to ask this to, but one thing that has always confused me throughout many of our discussions similar to these is, you know, the the number that we've all decided upon of the actual student population in our building. And when I flipped to the back page of this report, just kind of scanning through it, a couple of things just jumped out at me, like, they have our current population at Winnebago Elementary as three hundred and seventy-six. I mean, that's, is that bad?
That's not accurate.
It's not accurate at all, which makes me wonder why.
It's a couple higher than that.
It's a lot higher than that. And they have a combined population for Cottage Grove School and Taylor Prairie Elementary as being seven hundred and nineteen. It just, I guess what I'm saying is, is if this is our official report that they're presenting to you, and they have such glaringly wrong populations in it.
It may not be inaccurate, it might be resident stu, students who are residents of the district as opposed to enrollment.
It's resident students.
But do we really, like, say, for example, at Winnebago, have a hundred and fifty open enrollment students in that, in that school, really?
I think we might.
With, with the tuition waivers and there's, there's, there's more, it's more than open enrollment.
Right. Maybe it would be helpful to add that for people like me who are like, are you kidding me? You're really off on this, especially when you're talking, especially when you're talking about space concerns and student population, it's a very misleading figure.
So could you put, could you put the numbers of students?
And I thought, I thought there were other things.
And then you could separate it out.
There are other total enrollment pieces, I think, yeah.
I I, I think there, I think there are tables in there that show total enrollment as well as resident enrollment.
And that's what this one says, Figure seventeen is total students projected, oh, from within the district. But I would imagine, I mean, you could also interpret that as students who are attending within the district.
But your point is well taken about about the numbers.
Perhaps sounds easily confused.
And and it's, well, what was the conclusion? It was ten or eleven percent of our enrollment is open enrollment. And and the, and I think the, I think the board, as well as other boards, are wrestled with because that's an income provider. But it also is, when class sizes get too big, it it becomes a burden or a problem or an issue. And but it's, but it's a, but I, personally, I think we have to continue to, I think, is well manage that to keep it in. And this study may reveal some factors where we need to manage it along a little different lines when we're down the pike.
My, I guess my point is that, that I'm trying to make is that managing that, I mean, we, I understand subtracting out out of district students, open enrollment, but there's still, you know, kids in seats that we have to plan those facilities around.
Sure. Jeff?
Susan, when we put together the committee, when we set together, we'd go to the experts, but we didn't want, I personally didn't want like Stassi on the committee because if at the very end, we come where we have recommendations to upgrade the football facility, right? We didn't want a big chunk of the people going, well, of course they're gonna do that, Stassi's on the committee, right? I mean, you had to, you had to be as neutral as possible on a committee, but still go to everybody, make sure that we get all their, their expertise. But if there's one person, we didn't want, I know how our community can get at times. I didn't want anybody saying, well, of course, that's how it's gonna happen, because he was on the committee. So that's why we were adamant to try to really get a.
So you could add a Joe Schuchardt instead.
Well, we could add, I think, I think we've heard your.
I made my point, didn't I?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, our logic was when we put. That's what I'm saying, our logic was when we put.
Any other questions again? Okay. All right, so then we move on to the policy committee decision.
Actually, I did do a report. And we met until ten thirty last night, so, and I was at the airport at five o'clock yesterday morning, so that's not too bad. The policy committee met last night at six thirty and went until ten thirty. We're working pretty hard on the transition to the Neola policy. The current MGSD policies on purchasing, policy six seventy-two and quotation bidding, six seventy-two point one, were integrated into the Neola policy format that combines these two policies into one Neola policy titled Purchasing Sixty-three Twenty. The Neola policy provides greater clarity and process to the previous board policy and provides clear direction on types of purchases and amounts of purchases requiring quotations, comma, bids, because those are different, and board approval, and/or board approval. The draft will be presented to the board for first read on March eleventh. The committee is currently awaiting return from Neola on the Neola Bylaw Series zero 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 zero, which is the first series that we transitioned from the current MGSD one hundred policy series, which is the Board of Education series. Once that is returned to the committee, we'll do a final review of the draft. The committee continued review of transition of current Monolony Grove School District Board Policy Series Two Hundred, which is Administration, to Neola Administration Series One Thousand. And, um, the next policy committee meeting is scheduled for, I have Monday, March sixteenth, so, at six o'clock.
Is that what it said?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, that is what it said, that's right.
Because committee members had conflicts the first week.
That's right.
All right? Any questions? Thank you. Dean, did you have any other questions? I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, then the next item is the report on the state convention. And as per policy, when we attend, um, conferences or conventions, we come back and report on the few of us attended this. Jessica?
Oh, I, I mean, I can start because of course I left my notes at home, so.
Okay, so you'll be quick, okay?
So, I will be really quick. I did attend a lot of, um, exciting sessions, uh, but I guess my comment that, um, was notable to me from past years going to the state conventions, that there were a ton of sessions about pa- passing referenda in, um, in the state of Wisconsin. So, I did get to go to a couple of those and, uh, it was interesting to hear other school districts' ideas and also to see, you know, that we really are doing fairly well as a district, although we still may have, uh, to go to referenda in the future and likely will. Uh, we are doing pretty well, so, that was an eye-opening thing to me. I was paging through my session book and I was like, look at all these.
Um, I actually did type mine up because, um, some of the sessions I thought were specifically relevant to things that we're doing and I thought it might be helpful to be able to see which of those they were and whether or not you had gotten to them. I know Dan was, you know, one of the ones I was in. Um, I went to the Tuesday pre-school board member success by Dr. David Lee, who, who was an impressive person. The overall emphasis tended to be, as I read it, um, it, it was a long afternoon meeting and it tended to emphasize more about how to identify bad board behavior, which, guess what, is pretty easy, right? Versus good traits to strive for and solutions for improvement, which would have been more of, of what. The, the workshop did clearly identify that leadership matters and communication is key. Wednesday was probably one of the best programs I went to. It was gifted and talented policy, it was taught by Baraboo and it's absolutely excellent. What they're doing is great. And I would strongly recommend we invite them down here to speak to the board. We can even do a consortium, invite some other board members from other districts here, but it was absolutely excellent. They, again, review the current state directive and that is state statute, each school board shall, shall mandatory provide access to an appropriate program for people who's identified as gifted and talented, so it means you have to identify them and you have to provide a program by law. And they review that. Their approach was, and the language they used was, the magic happens in the classroom. A policy, first of all, they wrote a policy that included the attitude of no excuses, they prioritize with appropriate resources, they have, and this is kind of neat because we could integrate this with our, our whole thought of our TOSSAs. They have gifted and talented coordinators, coaches in every school to coordinate programming, help identify students, help meet individual needs, and to work with parents and staffing, train, um, coaching with the staff, and it built leadership. The first thing they did was a gap analysis, you know, where are we, where are we now? Where do we want to be? Which is what we do when we're trained in and we're getting good at it. They established a gifted and talented advisory council consisting of teachers, board, parents, students, administrators, and other stakeholders who met quarterly. They established a three-year action plan, started with building teacher capacity through professional development and use the response intervention model for identification and intervention, which we already have, so it already puts us on. Meeting kids where they are. They provided opportunities for medical, middle school students to take high school courses for high school credit, kind of like we do. So, right now, we have an advanced math program in our middle school, which includes pre-algebra, algebra, and geometry, and they give high school credit for those courses. And if for any reason you feel you need to or you want to, you're allowed to retake that course in high school. They collaborated with UW Baraboo to offer opportunities for blended courses for college coursework, and they collaborated with UW Whitewater to provide professional development and licensure for gifted and talented teaching, because there's a special licensure for that. It was just an excellent workshop and it's a lot of what we're already doing, um, we just needed to package it. Then I went to how to get the board on board for long-term facility master plan, and I went to like four of these different workshops, and this was the best one. The interesting thing is, this included CG Schmidt, which is the current consultant that Dean's committee has advocated for. It included Cedarburg and Brown Deer superintendent and staff. And they reviewed the processes for assessing, review, and planning for long-term facility, planning, building, collaboration, communication, and it was kind of knock your socks off, it was really impressive. So, um, we can already see a lot of that's coming to fruition, so that was really good. And they provided different processes, is what was interesting, for very different communities, although you think Brown Deer is like Cedarburg, well, they're not, and their populations are entirely different and their, um, composition is very different. So, it was really interesting how they used different processes for approaching those boards. Then, uh, developing leaders in a collaborative model, evidence-based, these are all, they're great people, um, that are great to see, Pewaki, Kettle Marine, Muskego, Narua Way, and the Conde Walk. What they did is they took four school districts, joined together to develop leaders in their school districts, um, again, did a gap analysis, start where you are, commit to excellence, they used a process, surveys, an action plan to improve schools by district, scorecards, rounding intentional conversations with employees, and focused on continuous improvement. And they built the leadership within four strong school districts, which was really impressive. Again, Joanne would come and talk to us anytime about how they did that, that was great. Creating a culture of achievement, improvement in student learning results, this was absolutely excellent. And again, it used that same process that we're talking about, that we're talking about using on our strategic plan. What's your current status, how do you compare, use similar techniques, surveys, rounding report cards. And this school district has had significant student achievement work as a result of this. This school district happened to have been Janesville. So, again, no matter how you look at it, or what you look at what's happening down there, when you see these teachers, these administrators, and that staff present this and talk about the collaboration they've had together, it was really, um, it was really impressive. And then they put their results up there and you just go, oh, my gosh. So, that was impressive. And then, um, another excellent program was by Verona, who also would be happy to share with us anytime, and it was called Closing the AP Gap. And what they did is they collaborated with the nonprofit Equal Opportunity Schools, radically increased the number of underrepresented students in advanced placement courses. What they did is they did a survey and basically they found that teachers supported having all different kinds of students in these particular classes, but they didn't really believe it would work or it could happen when they did the survey. So, they started with working with the staff and the perceptions of the staff. And the results, they doubled the participation rate in AP classes, um, and, um, bridged, so, bridged the gaps in the student-teacher perceptions about whether they could do the work, and they had a great process. And the end was they didn't require the AP exam. So, again, this is another piece that would be worth having us listen to. And then I went to the Elm Brook program on innovative compensation for teaching staff, and you can actually see that on their website. Another, went through some very similar processes to the things you've done with teacher compensation, but, um, did, did build some merit. They have, their main areas were performance, collaboration, professional learning, but they also built in, um, some other pieces. And, um, they did lots of World Cafe meetings, lots of staff surveys, and worked strongly, collaboratively as a group from the beginning to the end with a, with a larger committee on that. But their material is interesting. Sorry, but it was, those were really great and it, they were all related to things we're trying to do.
Did you send that teacher compensation thing to me?
Yeah, I could send you the link, keep that, keep that, keep that.
Okay, Peter?
Uh, three things to note. One is if you've been following the exciting, uh, uh, resolutions at the delegate assembly, they were all adopted.
Oh.
You were going to say what?
Yeah, that's right, that's, that's. Uh, there's, there's two noticeable presentations that I wanted to note. One was Monolony Falls, uh, continuous improvement, um, discussion. This is a district that really has very aggressively and completely integrated continuous improvement to what goes on in the district. And I'm, uh, you can go on and on about what they're doing, I'm going to give you two examples. One is if you look through their annual parts, there's images from classrooms of students doing PDSA students circles, uh, around the education, about what's going on in the class, what's their learning goals, how are they going to get there? So, that's at the bottom level. And at the second, topless level, this is the superintendent's evaluation, and it is based on the continuous improvement process, you know, what's the scores are, how we did with various steps in the continuous improvement operation. So, from top to bottom, it looks like they have, uh, pretty solid implementation of continuous improvement.
Is it Monolony Falls?
It's Monolony Falls.
But I.
That's Padver.
Yes, I'm sorry, you're right. And, uh, anyway, I will get past these, um, around the district, she didn't give the presentation, somebody else did, so.
Okay.
I gotta pass this around for us, well, uh, discussion. The other thing that I saw, thought was extremely going on, and it was quite interesting, was the Verona that, um, Susan just men- mentioned where they're talking about, uh, and she's getting, getting more students, they're already sticking into the programs and is by providing supports and also looking at, um, cultural improvements that they have in the schools. And it'd be interesting to go back in a year to see how successful it being as a new program, but I think it's, there's a lot of very interesting things that they're doing there.
I'm glad you were in there then.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
It was, it was an excellent presentation and really very, very useful stuff.
I want to note that those two agreed unanimously on.
That's true.
That we were both in the room.
Both in the room, both in the same room. All right, well, I attended one, um, the Brown Deer that was, the Brown Deer District, which was very interesting and I, I, they focused, it was focused on closing the achievement gap, and they started with a very powerful video that was, I think, on national news at some point, because it appeared to be a national news stream, but, um, they pointed out that a middle-income child starts kindergarten typically with about a six-month lead over a lower-income child, but once they're in kindergarten, they learn at the same rate. So, there's some progress made. Then when you hit summer, the middle-income child typically moves ahead a month, the lower-income child tends to move back two months because they don't have all the opportunity cut, as per your summer school discussion. So, that when this repeats itself every year, so in other words, every, when they come back to school in first grade, then the lower-income child is typically that much further behind. So, again, they grow at the same rate, but they're starting from different points at that point again, and the gap gets larger and larger. So, that by the end of grade five, typically there's a two and a half to three-year gap, and as we all know, it's very difficult to close from that time going forward. So, just stressing the importance, importance of closing that gap. And they started with that and they've made a huge effort in Brown Deer. A lot of it seemed to be behavioral, they didn't really, they, this is relatively new over the last couple of years, and as we all know, it also takes some years to, to close these gaps, it's not going to happen in a year, but they're seeing huge progress. They focused on things like engagement, time and opportunity in summer programs, expanded learning opportunities, they brought early childhood back into the school, revamped their 4K to be more play social oriented with more intentional programming, partner with local childcare centers, they have a community learning center, some of this they applied for grants to develop with some of this. With, as far as the RTI model, giving priority to kids with the tier two and three interventions, extra reading aid time, um, and the, with the 4K kids who are still in the district are making much more progress than the kids who didn't start with 4K. They're partnering with the YMCA for wraparound care and trying to introduce some of these skills in wraparound care, so they're trying to kind of reach out to the community to teach these skills to other childcare providers as well. At the high school level, they have a huge character education effort going on with PBIS, some of what we're doing, but they've, um, they've really, it seemed to be, be able to have, get the students to have some ownership of it, and the students have created some lessons. They, they said the first year, they had teachers create character lessons for, they have, they still have homerooms in their high school, I guess, and they were doing them during the homeroom, and the kids pronounced, most of them kind of lame, and said, hey, can we do this ourselves? And so, the next year, the students kept playing the lessons and they have worked much better, there's a lot of buy-in, of course, not perfect, but their referrals were down from some huge number, like six thousand to less than two thousand, um, in the time that they've done this, within a couple of year periods, so they're seeing a huge difference. They're doing, you know, a, a lot of other, other kinds of efforts. Anyway, it's very impressive and they, they didn't end up really talking a lot about their academic success and it'd be a district I'd be interested in contacting to see further where they've gone with it. Additionally, I attended, I attended a few sessions on, I'm not going to talk about everything I did, but I attended a few sessions on boardmanship and board superintendent relationships, and this is just, uh, one of them was diet by WSB, a key word of school boards, and just handing out kind of that summary, because I think it doesn't hurt for us to kind of read through periodically and, uh, get an idea of, you know, just kind of think again through our role and versus staff role. They reiterated the board role being one of setting policy, the superintendent's role being one of operational, operationalizing those policies, um, the superintendent and staff being the professionals, we are not the professionals. And the, and the importance of communication came up in practically every session I was in, I mean, that's, that's a huge, huge thing. The WSB, interestingly, is looking at possibly trying to mandate, I'm not sure how they do this, but training for new board members, so that you would, and I, you know, there was a legislator last year who wanted to pass a law that would require that board members be, go through X amount of, about a number of hours, I think it was sixteen hours or something, of training, and it didn't kind of go anywhere and I, you know, their question was raised, well, people are elected, but can you really, can you really do that? But WSB is serious because I, I think as they look around the state, they're just seeing people run for different reasons, as we all know, and that this, the training might help, so that's what the key word for school boards was. I'll skip a lot of this, but I also went, uh, the WPN, as you know, that we've, there were supporting, we had, we did have, yeah, probably close to three or so people show up to talk at various times, people kind of came and went to our, um, room, we got, gathered names, and the, the group that did, this is related to, um, the situation with public schools in the state, Building Advocacy, Building an Advocacy Group. There was a survey put out by, uh, the school reform, or funding reform for public schools out of Stevens Point, and they had no intention that it would be, and I sent this to you all, I don't know how many of you had a chance to take it, but they got over four thousand responses within three weeks, four thousand people took this survey, and thirteen hundred of them sent their, their email addresses, they wanted to be added to the list, they wanted to have awareness. So, it is having some impact in terms of reaching out. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago in Stevens Point, and we were having a meeting later, um, probably somewhere in the lacrosse area, trying to move the meetings around the state, so they're not always in Madison, so that other people can come from rural districts, who are certainly being, uh, crunched by the current budget, which we'll hear a little bit more later. I guess that's, that's probably all I ever want to report on. The Brown Deer one was, I guess, one of the more exciting ones and a couple others, but some of your already reported on, so, any comments, other comments, questions?
Elm Brook one that you went to?
Yeah, there was another compensation one, I was just going to skip that, I deleted it.
Yeah, again, just if you get a chance to hear a part or.
They have a link and I could send you that, their link as well, um, the Elm Brook presentation. They, oh, they, well, they had, I mean, I, I also went a day early to hear the technology one, that was also very, very interesting, what Elm Brook has done with technology and, yeah, there are, as usual, lots of good things here and, um, you know, by, it's the, the thought process is going.
I just thought it was interesting that people were entertaining the training of school board members before they could serve on school boards.
Right.
And that would probably be the legislature doing that, wouldn't it?
Well, as I said, they, there was talk about that last year, but. Well, as I said, there was talk about that last year, but the question was raised.
So you're taking me too seriously.
Oh, okay. I thought you missed that, sorry. Because there is a constitutional issue with that, I think. I mean, I, you know, I don't know. I think if the WSB sort of set this up, there would, there may not be any real teeth in it, but it would be a strong encouragement, which they encourage you now, but they want to make it a little stronger. I think they've got a committee that's working on it, so.
He was playing with, maybe they should look in the mirror before they looked outside.
Right, right, yeah, perhaps.
Yeah, maybe.
Well, there are, there are those who think the legislature should have that. And they do have training, but I'm not sure.
And I'm not remembering this, but I thought they gave us a number of states that actually did require that, and that's what they're patterning after.
Yeah, well, we'll see where it goes.
Which I was surprised about.
States owned, I would say to that one.
Short comment. As far as my participation, you know, the workshops that were, the workshops that were reported on tonight, and two key things that I was focusing on were workshops related to strategic planning. And of course, that's an important piece that we're working through, and attended one of the same ones that Susan had. And then the other one, also the Elm Brook one on teacher compensation that was referenced, you know, as well. And in fact, we've already used some of the materials. If you recall, we have a work group working on some of the pieces of our plan. They have a lot of things that there is that mirror the work that we're doing. And so the work group, you know, led by Andrew and Nicole, were using some of those resources, in fact, last week. And so we'll be sharing those out as well with the committee as we move forward. So it's interesting, we look at compensation, it's, there's so many different models out there now, and everyone's trying to figure out what's best for the district. But we're starting to see a few more come in that has some similarities to ours that we're able to perhaps use as we finalize our plan.
You didn't learn so much that we have to start over, did you?
Not at all. In fact, we have one district I know that commented, they're waiting for us to finish, they copied us.
Yeah, I heard that, too. There are people that are watching what we do, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Will we collaborate it? Can we collaborate?
Sell it. It's been done.
All right, then we'll move on to discussion items. And the first item is a report from WGNCPA regarding your audit financial statements for the year ending June 30th of 2014. We have Natalie Ru here. And you have, on your desks in front of you, a copy of the report.
I think I already did have half my audit evidence from this meeting. You're in trouble. It was a good meeting. I'm Natalie Ru. I am senior manager with WGNCPAs, and we are your audit firm. We come out about ten, five of us, come and spend a week with Jared and Julie giving your audit. And I apologize for this through February, and we're talking about last June. Our goal is to hopefully maybe be here in December next year. A little more timely information for you to move forward with. So, I hope it's not getting too boring, but I'd like to cover the top 10 things to know about your financial statements. They are quite large reports. I'm assuming they got copies of them back in December. Right. I got a call from the school district who just received their audit reports. They thought, a little late. So, first thing I always like to talk about is the independent auditor's report, which is on page one of your report. You have a clean opinion. The opinion says the financial statements present fairly in all material respects to financial position of the Monona Grove School District. In that opinion, it clearly states that our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements. The financial statements which follow, which is everything past page three, are the responsibility of the district's management. We assist management in preparing the financial statements. It's just easier for us. And so how we get around this responsibility is we basically download your Skyward software into our software, and we do the audit that way, and we generate the financial statements right off of the Skyward download. We then, for the footnotes, all of the information in the footnotes is actually provided to us by Jared and Julie Strasburg, so that honestly, I could probably take this shell and hand it to Jared, and, you know, a few weeks later, they would be able to provide me the financial statements. It's just much easier for us to just print this out and drop the information. It takes about a week for us to do it. It's much more convenient. And then we send the draft to Jared, and he and Julie reads within the report and verify that they agree with the information and send it back. And always want to talk about adjusting journal entries. Anytime you have less than 10, that's good. If you ever have more than 10, adjusting journal entries. The board should be talking to the district's management on what they can be doing to improve their reporting system. During the course of the audit, there are certain things that, that management would always typically wait for us to get here for and then say, here's what we're looking at, here's where we have issues, here's what I think we need to do. And we go, yes, go ahead, do that. And so we do not consider those to be adjusting journal entries. Okay? So through the course of the audit, Julie would bring to us entries saying, you need to book this, because this is where, where we've resolved these issues, and here's the entry. We, as the auditors, did not identify, I can move forward here, I guess. We, as the auditors, did not identify any entries that during our coursework, we would come to Julie and say, you've got a big problem here you need to fix. Okay? And that, that's really great, because I will tell you that I, I do have, I do have clients that I booked about 40 adjusting journal entries on. And that, to me, speaks volumes to the quality of your financial reports that you are using to make decisions on throughout the year. If, if your auditors come in and they are not making significant entries, then you can have confidence on the information you're getting throughout the year and making decisions. If your auditor comes in and makes 40 journal entries, then you have to question what you're getting throughout the rest of the year to make decisions upon. Okay? Which then leads to internal control, because you would not have minimal journal entries if you did not have strong internal controls. Again, a tone at the top. Every time we've made recommendations during the course of the audit, Jared and Julie and, or HR?
Heather was.
Heather are always, you know, how can we implement this immediately? How can we make this happen? Business office actually expanded its personnel and hired additional staff for payroll and HR. As you talk to Elm Brook, you'll see that they have a very large payroll HR staff. I do that audit, and sometimes I'm just like, why do you guys slow it down? I have to catch up with you. So the, Jared, your business office has expanded as you continue to, to implement internal controls and procedures. And that, again, reflects internal, good internal controls, and the fact that you don't have adjusting journal entries at the end of the year. Okay? Number, either way, number four. I always like to talk about your general fund balance. General fund balance is usually broken up into five categories. Non-spendable, which is typically, fund balance you can't spend. So for example, prepaid assets, inventory, it's not in a convertible, spendable form. Then you have restricted fund balance, which is usually restricted by a third party. So a grantor, or a labor union, laws and regulations. Typical for restricted, which you do not have in general fund, but you would have in your food nutrition fund, would be any of the revenues generated by the food nutrition fund need to be used for food and nutrition. That fund balance in your financial statements would be restricted under the nutrition fund. Debt service levy. When you levy for the debts, your debt service, you obviously can't use that for any other purpose than to pay your debt. Anything remaining at the end of the year, because you have that first September payment, is reported as restricted. It can't be used for any other purpose. Okay? We get to committed and assigned, and I always want to spend a little bit of time talking about this. This year, we did not have any committed fund balance. In prior years, I think the board did take action to commit. Committed fund balance is a little restrictive in that the board takes action at its highest level resolution to commit fund balance for a specific purpose. I'm going to just take the topic that we were using, athletic fields. We're going to commit $3 million or X percent of our ending fund balance towards a new athletic field. We're going to commit so much of our fund balance towards HRAs or HSAs. I mean, you see these weird commitments. What happens with those commitments is that the district cannot use those funds for any other purpose without taking equal action to uncommit. But it sends a clear message that the board has this specific intended purpose. So again, with the athletic field type thing. Assigned allows the board to designate, say, Dan or Jared. The authority to assign fund balance to say, here's what our intended purpose is, but if we needed to, like last year, we had the tornadoes that hit the town. If you, we had a tornado and you needed to replace a roof, we could use that, that, those, that fund balance for that roof without having to go through an entire board resolution to uncommit funds. Dan would probably just come and report, you know, I recommend you saying unassigning, and we'll do this, and you say, sure. Unassigned is, is good, as we get to the next slide. Unassigned is the remaining fund balance that's available to, to meet the discretionary needs of the district. Unassigned, and I'm saying this as your auditor, and obviously I'm on the record, but unassigned also is not, it's not always something you want a lot of your fund balance tied up in, because I probably look at each one of you and say, if you could take that $8 million and say, what would you want to do with it over the next four months of the school year? You'd have specific things you had in mind. And you probably all would agree on those things. Years ago, there was this, when we didn't have this definition of fund balance, but it was just unrestricted, unreserved. School boards were kind of told, you don't want to have unrestricted, unreserved. As soon as Julie and Jared submit the annual report to DPI, that information is being farmed by every legislative body out there. And what they're looking at is what's hanging out in this unassigned. And it sends a message. And I would have to say that that's not the case, that message. So if there's, if you can assign, if you can commit, I highly recommend it. And again, it doesn't have to be specific dollar amounts. It could be, if you know it's specific, that's great, but if, if not, you know, percentages or something like that. But I really get nervous when I see this unassigned, because I believe, you know, as, as the budgets start to get tighter, these are numbers that people will get. When I was at DPI, we were always providing these numbers, which is, you know, troublesome. Which leads to the next one, which is why I say it's good. I go back saying, please don't put so much in your unassigned. And then I turn around and say, here's what we have here. We turn around and we look at your unassigned fund balance, and we generally recommend about two months of fund balance in your, available. Okay, so now I just said you shouldn't have too much sitting in there, but then I turn around and say you need to have something sitting there. We come with, up with two months, because where that comes up with is, if you were a regular business and you had a slowdown in your flow of revenue, and I think back to like a couple of years ago when state aid was not paid on time. Okay, so it does happen in, in school districts. How long would you need to have, how much cash would you need on hand to make sure you continued operations? And it's about two months of cash that you would need on hand. And that comes out to about 16% of your general fund operating expenditures. This general fund operating expenditures actually is your general fund and your special education combined, for reporting purposes, they get combined. Okay, next one. General fund revenues. Where are your revenues coming from? And I say, last year was the first year you actually really see that change between your local and state revenues. You're consistently coming in, in the 50s percent, but, you know, from 2010 to 2014, you've gone from 51% to 55% of local, and your state revenues have dropped from 39 to 35. And then I love this. It's the revenues, and then the expenditures. You're very consistent, and I'll point out what the variance is that you're seeing here, but you're very consistent in how you're, you're allocating resources. 47, 46%, 47, 46% for instruction is strong. What we're seeing in the current year, that 43 dip is actually caused by, there was some capital, about $5 million of capital improvements this year, which kind of skews the numbers, and it falls in under administration. But if I had pulled that out, you would have popped right back up to the 47% and your regular ratio, which is impressive. And your debt service has gone down. It's, allows you to reallocate resources. Number eight. I always talk about compliance. So when you look at your report, you know, everyone loves to look at your, that first opinion letter that talks about the clean opinion on your financials. But then they don't go look at the back. And I, I really like the reports at the back a lot better. I think they give me more. One is the independent auditor's report on internal control over financial statements. And it would talk about if you had a material weakness or a significant deficiency in internal controls, and what that would be. We did not identify any weaknesses in your internal controls. Okay? And as I discussed earlier, the district continues to implement stronger segregation of duties, review, and tightening its controls. The next one is the report on compliance for each major federal and major state program. And again, this year, we had no findings on your federal programs. We did have two findings in state programs. And the district had already, by the time we got in for field work, taken implementations to fix those two items. And they were both related to transportation. Sometimes they actually get, they're a little difficult. But with your state federal programs, where your big dollars amount, you did not have any findings, which is a huge improvement. The final one, and this is a strange one. I didn't cover this in prior years, but I'm bringing it up because of the next topic we have to talk about. Your statement of net position in the financial statements, the financial statements are, have. Your statement of net position, in the financial statements, the financial statements are, have this strange, they have the fund statements, which everyone is used to looking at, and you're used to getting reports from Jared on fund financials. But then there's the GASB, the full accrual statements upfront, which I'm sure all of you kind of just flip past and, and then go to the fund statements, which you're accustomed to looking at. The, the statement of net position is a full accrual accounting. It includes the inclusion of capital assets, which is why you always have to get that appraisal report every year. It includes the OPEB, which is why you have to get the actuary report done every other year. It includes your general obligation debt. So the, this statement of net position is actually financial statements prepared at a level that everyone else has to, to report at, basically not-for-profits and businesses, regular businesses. So it is intended, and I think it's a, personally, I think it's a very confusing statement, but it is intended to actually report financials in a way that the general public's used to looking at things. And so what we have here is your net investment in capital assets is three million dollars. And what that is, is we take all your fixed assets and we net all the debt that you owe against those capital assets, and that's your net investment in capital assets. These are your restricted fund balance. Again, you've got levy for debt service, you've got levy for, actually, it's not levy, it's debt issue, for capital projects, you have some donor restrictions, your nutrition service, your community service levy. And then what's left is your unrestricted. And the reason I bring this up is that prior to GASB forty-three, forty-five, no one really cared about OPEB. No one cared about post-employment benefits. It was a pay-as-you-go, it was something you had, that you'd had to deal with, kind of, but no one looked at the long-term effect of it. GASB made, made municipalities, including school districts, put that on the face of these GASB statements. And all of a sudden, it was the hot topic, you know, that all of a sudden, you're getting these actuary reports and everyone's saying, what can we do to control OPEB? I've actually seen districts eliminate it and they can't hire anyone, but they, they just didn't want to deal with anymore. And that's where all of a sudden, you suddenly, before OPEB, you didn't hear about HRH, HSAs, 403D. I mean, you didn't hear about any of that stuff anymore. And now all of a sudden, people are saying, how can we get rid of OPEB and do other things? It opened a can of worms. So GASB wasn't heavy enough, and they decided to implement GASB sixty-eight, which will hit your financial statements this year. And it is the accounting and financial reporting for pensions. So in your GASB statements now, there will be a pension liability. And there will be pension footnotes that are similar to all of the OPEB footnotes that we now look at. And your financial statements, your statement of net position will look a lot different because it will now reflect pensions. The WRS has agreed that they will prepare all of the disclosures that the districts are going to need. And the reason they agreed to that is because that has to be audited. And it is easier for the WRS to have their auditors take care of that than to have the four thousand and some auditors from all the municipalities go out and visit the WRS to get that information. So we will be relying on the work of the auditors of the WRS to get that information to put into our financial statements. We are not certain what those, that liability is going to look like. What was it, like six years ago? Was it like six years ago that we had the whole chewing up of the unfunded liability? I'm assuming that that's grown again, that there will be another chewing up. That's it. Any questions from when you actually saw these two months ago?
It's a nice report.
Thank you.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
What, what is the message that is supposedly sending what I said in that much money?
It's not that much because you have to always, also, you know, you have to be ready to present to whoever. And I'm, I'm assuming that they're not going to come and say, Manona Grove has this much. They're going to say, statewide, there is this much sitting in unrestricted, unreserved, and all of these districts have all kinds of money to spend and they don't need ours. That's what that decision is.
I like what they did with UW, I mean, that sort of attack.
Yeah. So it is always, that's why I say, look at that committed, look at that assigned, which may not be restricted as much. Again, you know, it, it's a double-edged sword because on one side, I'm saying, you know, I'm not, I, I don't like to see all that sitting down there because I know how it's being interpreted. I've heard the questions, I, I ran the reports to be delivered to these people. On the other hand, I'm saying, you should have sixteen percent of your fund balance, you know, of your, have a fund balance equal to sixteen percent of your annual expenditure sitting in fund balance. So, you know, I'm, I'm saying two different things. But I do get concerned about districts sending the wrong message, which is, it's, it's an untrue message.
It seems like, yeah, these shows are physically responsible. But if you have people reading, reading your message, you don't have that responsibility.
Well, you know, you, you were just talking about how, you know, maybe some people up there should be going to a training. You know, everyone loves to run, data, data is, is very, it's a great tool, data is a wonderful tool. I just had a DPI run me a bunch of reports because I've had some schools wanting to look at trends that, DPI used to have a data warehouse, and I could go out there and farm all kinds of data all the time. The data warehouse was not, wasn't maintained, it wasn't a priority to be maintained. So now every time I need data, I have to call and say, DPI, would you run me all these reports so I can run data? And it's, it's a dangerous, you know, it's a lovely thing to have and people can make decisions, but at the same time, you have people who don't know what that data means. They, they don't know what they're looking at, and they'll, they'll go to town with all this data and not actually understand what they're looking at. So it's, it's, it's. Yes, sir.
Does DPI control that data, or are they having to request it from the Department of Administration?
All of the data is submitted to DPI during, during the annual report. It's kind of like all of your membership report data, all of your annual financial statements. That all is required to be submitted by state statutes to DPI. They maintain all that data. The issue really is that as a municipality, all of that data is open document. It's, it's, it's public, it's available to anybody. DPI will ask people to do an open records request to, you know, if it's out of hand. But when a legislator, when, when someone's, it's not usually the legislator, it's someone's, their, it's the, their assistant or the representative calls up and says, hi, I work for so-and-so, we need this, this, this. That, that is, that's an order. And they pull all that information together and they get it to them. And they don't ask questions. And sometimes, you know, you know who it's coming from and you're like, oh.
Yeah, well, the reason I ask, shortly after I left DPI in the nineties, the, the control of the school finance formula and those types of things. The computers were removed out of the operational control of the Department of Public Instruction, given to the control of the Department of Administration.
Yeah, the overall computer, yeah, the, the networking, yes.
Yeah, so, so a request to DPI is really a request to DPI that goes to DOA.
DPI still farms it, yeah.
I'm asking whether the accounting data goes the same route as the school aid formula data.
It, yes, because it's all feeds in, actually. So all of the finance data feeds into the aid calculation. It's actually a direct feed into that aid calculation. It's, the network is owned by the DOA, by DOA. The, all of the, but the, the data is all still controlled by DPI. So the data is controlled, it's just that the whole networking is over at DOA now. But DOA does not, you know, Karen Kuchers is still over there testing the aid calculation to make sure it's all working properly, and she's still making changes to the calculation and sending them to upload. And when it gets uploaded, yes, it has to go to DOA to get uploaded. They're like the network administrators.
Other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Then the next item or related item is the state budget report update.
So what I wanted to do tonight was just give you a, a very high level of the governor's proposal for the new state budgets. Now, keep in mind, this is the based off of information that was presented. We still have a long way ahead of us to have a final state budget, but this is just using numbers that have been released. We're still trying to get clarification of things that are in the state budget, and not only myself, but Dane County's schools, along with our state organization, administrators organization, trying to get these answers figured out, like, what does this really mean, how is this going to affect us? So what I did is, I did attach the overall budget for some fun reading, but then I did put together a summary that actually came out from the school administrative alliance group that sort of walks through the very specific things as it relates to education. You know, one of the things that is very misleading, and I put that in the, in the beginning of my summary here, is that, you know, we are getting reports that education is being funded at the same level as it was before. However, we want to point out that that's not the case. What we're seeing is, when we just look at the revenue limit side of things, that's for individuals that are not aware, based on state law, the district is able to only collect up to a maximum on a number of dollars based on, trying to multitask here, based on the number of students and a per pupil dollar amount that is typically set by the state. And, and so there is a zero percent incre, zero percent increase for next year, which means that based on our revenue limit, the only way that we would be able to see an increase in our overall revenue that would go into our budget to allow us to add new resources or continue the resources that we have for our students is by actually seeing physical enrollment growth of our residents. Now, last year, we did experience a hundred and four resident growth. We're hoping that we get that or more, if, if we do see this budget go through. You know, we're seeing our enrollment study, that's a good possibility. But want to make sure that everybody knows that as, as we talk through some of these numbers, those numbers are being based on us seeing enrollment growth, not because we're seeing additional money from the states. So number one is there is no increase to our per pupil allocation for either the first year of the biennium or the second. General aid, so when we look at that revenue limit, we look at the overall revenue that we can get, then the state comes in and tells us the amount of aid that we can, that we're receiving as a Manona Grove school district. That's reduced off of the total amount, and the remaining amount is what's being distributed to taxpayers. So when we talk about, or when we hear individuals talk about no property tax increase, what happens is that they would just give us a revenue limit increase and no state aid. Typically, what happens is property taxes increase because since state aid's not coming in and we're seeing an overall revenue increase, property tax happens. So that's the reason that they're freezing both. They know that they're not putting money into state aid, so they can't give us a revenue increase. However, the one area where we're going backwards is, in the last state budget, there was a new categorical aid that was created. In the last year, it was a hundred and fifty dollars per pupil. That is actually being removed. So we're actually going to lose four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars under the, the current governor's proposal. So we're seeing zero percent, zero increase unless we have enrollment, and we already know off the top that we're receiving a four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar decrease. Where they are seeing, putting some money in is the school levy tax credit, which does not come to the school district that has passed through the property tax bills. And, you know, that's where I think some of the confusion happens, is that they're putting money into property relief and they're calling it the school tax credit, which is going directly through property taxes. It's not coming through the district's budget. We're not increasing funding because of that, what they're doing is they're just driving property taxes down. You might have heard also some reports come out that they're giving some additional money to rural schools. Obviously, that doesn't affect us. However, you know, when they're talking about transportation, trying to bring some increased internets, giving some additional aid to those schools, which obviously they're, they're not seeing the growth. So not only are they not getting that revenue limit increase, they're also experiencing the decrease of the hundred and fifty dollars. Plus, they're, they're getting a very small increase, which is still nets out to a decrease for them. They're increasing the voucher expansion program, which does have an impact on us. Now, we have a statewide open program where individuals can go anywhere and they take the money with them. So if, if we have individuals that leave our school district to go to a voucher school, that those, those students will take money out of our budget to follow them to whichever program that they go. So before, there was caps on that, and now those caps have been completely lifted. Assessment's an area that's, that's more of a, you know, we talk about Common Core. What they're doing is they're removing the requirement for certain testing, but they're not coming out and saying that Common Core has to be removed. They're just taking out some of the assessments that tie directly to Common Core. We're not for sure what's going to happen when we look at those smarter balance tests, because that's one thing that has been removed. We're not for sure if they're going to come up with a new one. Is DPI going to pay for that, or is it going to be something that the district has to pay for? We know that they're keeping, as of right now, the ACT program, Sweden for High School, and continuing to fund that. But we don't know about those other assessments that happen at third through eighth grade.
Can I ask, but do we, do you know what the cost of administering this smarter balance test is?
Because. I don't.
You don't, okay.
No.
Andrew does.
I think, I think that, well, I've heard that I think it's about twenty-nine dollars per student. Cost of state, you might be hiring now.
Thirty-three, thirty-three.
And I can't remember, yeah, I've heard this before.
It's very high, I mean, it's higher than other assessments that we've had in the district, like MAPS.
On the accountability side, we're, we're changing to more of a letter grade concept and having multiple assessments and tying into that. Chapter two twenty, which doesn't necessarily affect us, but that's a program for enrollment in, in, around Milwaukee for individuals to leave Milwaukee School District and go to those surrounding school districts, and that has money that goes back and forth. Now, that has not really had a lot of increased funding over the years, so it just will gradually go out of the program. Currently, CISA does receive some state aid. That is being eliminated, so what they're doing, and they're not requiring us to be part of a CISA. Before, every school district was part of a CISA. You use those, you could go be, you know, you obviously belong to a CISA, but you could also look at other CISAs for different programming, such as when we looked at communications. We're belonging to CISA two, but we can also look at other CISAs to.
That means the services from CISA would, would decrease or?
Well, we're either going to see a decrease in services or we're going to also see an increase in fees because they're going to, they have to be now a hundred percent funded. They don't have the ability to go out and collect property taxes or receive aid. So everything now will be a hundred percent funded through programs and schools continuing on with them. So before, they had an administrative cost or administrative fee that every school district paid to help fund some of those things. Now, obviously, if schools decide to pull out, I don't foresee that necessarily happening, but there's a possibility. And then they're also planning on some alternative teacher licensing methods and stuff like that. And obviously, not an expert on that, but wanted to put that as part of their education budget that they had put through. Another area that was not added to this list was, we currently belong to the local property funds, which gives our property insurance to us, and that's being proposed to be eliminated. Obviously, concerned because if that happens and they don't pass the state budget and it goes away July one, we're going to have to come up with a, a new property insurance. Obviously, there are vendors out there, but the, the local property fund has been a, a great resource for us because it's, it's a little bit more, they, they cover most of all the, the state's property, and they have a little bit more flexibility on, you know, if we don't have something specifically. and they have a little bit more flexibility on, you know, if we don't have something specifically listed on our policy, they cover it. Where, when you go with more of these private firms, you have to make sure that everything's specific. And if you add something new and it's not there, something happens, they're a little harder to, um, get replacements for. But the other part of it is, is the local property fund doesn't necess- I mean, they look at our losses, but they are looking at us as a statewide, similar to what our state health insurance does. Or if you go with a, a local or a, another private vendor, they're going to look at specifically your losses. And if you happen to have a bad year, um, you might see larger rate increases that are sort of out of our control.
And when you use the word property, you're not talking about real estate. You're talking about other commodities like computers and-
I'm talking about property, so that would be our real estate, our, you know, our liability, our, our property, um, some of our vehicle insurance. They do an umbrella, but we do have other types of insurance, but it would be covering this building. So if there was a fire, they would be the one that would come in and help us.
So rather than have a large pool, everybody's all out for their-
Right. So, um, we do belong to a, a risk management consortium, but that, that we, we don't have right now a property consortium. So we're looking at that as a next step if something happens. So one thing that, you know, just want to talk about some initial impact, so I just gave you a scenario. So if the district experiences a student growth of a hundred students, as we did, similar to this year, our revenue limit would increase by eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Now, that whole eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, thank you, Joyce, would not necessarily be passed along to property taxes. The state would tell us how much state aid we would receive, and then whatever state aid we receive, we would reduce that. And whatever we didn't, we would pass along. So-
Yeah, we pass, but we also have to include programming for those.
Yes, yes. So we're seeing a hundred, so we're seeing eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. But that includes potential new staff members, inflation, we're, we, we know that we might have to add a couple of bus routes, depending on where those kids go. We know fuel utilities are going to increase, so that's what that is supposed to help us with. Now, that's not, um, a large increase by any means, especially when you look at when we're reducing a hundred and fifty dollars per pupil, which they're taking away four hundred and, you know, fifteen-
And we're still losing that on every one of those hundred, if we get a hundred students, hypothetically. We're still going to lose a hundred, so we're getting money by volume, not by-
Right, so, so we're getting eighty-three and we're going to subtract this. So we're really, when you look at that netting out, that we would have about four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. But when we look at, just looking at health insurance, when we have a four million dollar budget and a nine percent increase, that's three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I'm just saying, I don't want to frame the public as we're getting more money because we're getting more kids. We're, we're still getting the same devastated cuts.
Yes.
We just have more kids to, 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 to acquire, to overcome some of that.
If our enrollment did increase, stayed the same, we would have a reduction in our revenue.
Right. So if we had zero enrollments, we would actually see a four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar decrease to our budget on top of all the other costs that we're going to have to budget for.
This has got to be a killer for rural school districts and that don't have the capacity for large increases.
So school districts that are seeing zero growth or declining enrollment is definitely being impacted, you know? We're being impacted. I don't think there's any school district that's going to tell you that they're, you know, under this budget, that they're walking away and getting some. Now, like I said at the beginning, we are also at the very beginning stage. And so there's going to be a lot of conversations from now until the end. We're seeing news media reports, you know, there's, it's not for sure a done deal that this is what's going to happen. I think this, this is definitely the starting point. And that's why I just wanted to, you know, this is what we're seeing. So people understand that if this is what ended up at the end, this is what we'd be looking at. But when we add a hundred students, and this is based on the enrollment that we were talking about before when we approved open enrollment, we would be looking at adding five staff to meet our, our guidelines. Well, five staff, you know, plus our increase in health insurance, we have now exceeded the amount of money that we potentially could have been bringing in because we saw increased enrollments. So, I mean, we're definitely, and then we have our utilities increasing and just other things that are inflation that we're experiencing across the board.
So I didn't want to be, oh, a hundred people getting better.
Yeah, and so, I mean, when you look at it, we're still on the negative side of things. We're not anywhere close to being positive.
So if everything goes as is, in two years, we will have less money?
Yes.
I, I just want to say, this is a really nice summary, and we might want to consider putting it up where people could see it at some point. Because at our meeting this morning, Rob Call, our state representative from this area, and actually, um, the mayor, Bob Miller, was also talking about this. And Mark Miller, our state senator, had come before the meeting started, and they, they, you know, they looked us, Susan, right in the eye and said, and did this.
They don't expect much, I mean, they'll, I, I think they expect some change, but it's going to be very minimal.
We're not going to get two hundred dollars like-
No, we're not.
Not by any means.
We may not even get a per pupil increase, but it'll be very small if there is one. And they don't expect anything to change with voucher, I mean, that's my question.
And they advocate, I mean, they're advocating for us and trying to help, but they talked about the politics. And the interesting thing right now is apparently it's difficult for even the Republicans to get in a room because of the casino issues. So they were saying that, you know, that's what is in the summary.
It's a lot of assumptions.
Stay the way it's going to be, so.
So over the two year, there's a, there, when you add everything up, it's a decrease of about a hundred and thirty-five dollars per pupil.
Question, special ed. I remember years ago, federal and state aid was at about sixty-eight percent. That was in a, what are we down to now and what's expected?
Well, right now, this, we're at twenty-six percent, so we anticipate that to drop even further. There is no increase to special education aid in the budget. And as costs continue, how special education aid is paid out, it's based on whatever every district is spending. And as we know, cost increase, we're anticipating there will be more special education cost out there and which will drive that twenty-six percent down to twenty-five, twenty-four. So, but there is definitely no increase. So we're far from our two-thirds funding or, you know, our sixty-eight percents that they used to be at.
And no relief in the mandates on any programs?
No, we still have very strict mandates on what funds can be used, what, but as a district, we, we take a very collaborative approach in making sure that we, as much as possible, try to eliminate those silos and work together across so we can utilize that money to the best, the most effective and efficient way of doing it, because we're not getting additional funds. You know, part of the, you know, when you read through that, part of the things that you see is language that, uh, reestimate of federal funds. Well, what does that mean? We don't know that. We're trying to get answers on, what does that mean? Are you going to send federal funds back because you don't necessarily agree? Or are you going to eventually allow us to be able to free some of those things up? We don't know that yet. So there's still parts of the budget that has not been clearly answered for us. But, you know, as we work through those things and if there's any updates, we'll definitely bring those to the board.
We talked about a little bit last night, and it's very familiar, but in terms of licensing thing, I think we can write a policy that we need, you need a license to teach in our district. So we can kind of come-
I think so, yeah. I mean, I don't know much about that part, yeah.
We can write a policy that says you need a license to teach in your district.
Well, the alternative licensing which proposed would be a license. It just comes from alternative method.
Driven aside what type of licenses-
Right, we have-
Yeah.
When we actually talked about that policy last night, talked with Nicole just a little bit. The impression is that we could write a policy that would say what you wanted to say if you wanted to do that.
Now, we need a policy that says they have to stay at somebody's office.
Part of the budget, you have those alternative licensing teachers.
Any other questions or comments on this?
It's one of the tools.
All right, well, thank you, Jared, we'll have to stay tuned, obviously.
Sandwich.
Um, sure, let's, we're going to take a short, maybe five minutes. Start and end time schedule, and Andrew is going to get us through that.
Should we go through the calendar first and then the start and end time? Okay. So we had, uh, we began our calendar development process as we typically do in the fall with conversations at cabinet level with administrative team. Uh, and we have a series of conversations there and then a series of opportunities for teacher feedback in the process throughout the fall. We had our last look at the calendar administrative team on January twenty-ninth. And the information for you tonight is, is what we discussed at that meeting. We had a couple of goals for our 2015-16 calendar, and one was to work towards monthly professional development. We want to reduce or even possibly eliminate half days of instruction, which we have a, a mix of those things now. We want to reduce those. We wanted to increase full days of in-service dates for grades six through eight. You'll recall, two years ago, we wrote, we wrote a one-day waiver to DPI when the laws were required of a hundred and eighty days of instruction to get a little bit of help on full day service at middle school. We also wanted to increase in-service time prior to the start of school to give our teachers and principals a little bit more time to get things organized. And in the, the piece of it is too, is to maintain some type of buffer in the case of severe weather in the system. I do want to, uh, we've discussed this before as well, but I just, as a reminder, the districts are no longer required to meet a hundred and eighty-day minimum, uh, days of instruction requirement. The requirement for the minimum number of hours of instruction is still in place. And there, there's a requirement for grades K-5, the minimum is one thousand and fifty. And for grade six-twelve is one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven, and we are well in excess of those figures in our proposal. So let's, just by the numbers, uh, calendar for K, in the K-8 area, K-5, we're at a hundred and seventy-five days, which comes out to a hun- of one thousand, one hundred and forty-nine hours of instruction. That's, that's very consistent with what we've had in the past. Six-eight will look a little different. That'll be also one hundred and seventy-five days, uh, which comes out to one thousand one hundred and seventy-two hours of instruction. And we are adding two minutes to the length of the school day. We have seven full day in-service dates on the calendar and only one half day of instruction, which is on the very last day of school in grades K through eight. And that's been, we see that as an improvement over trying to do a half a day of instruction and a half a day with in-service. And neither one is done as well as we might, so we're moving in that direction. And we do have monthly in-service with the exception of December and May at the K-8 level. Nine-twelve, we have a hundred and seventy-eight days of instruction, which comes to one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven hours. Again, we're adding two minutes to the school day. We have one additional half day in-service before s- s- school starts with students. That's true at the younger grades as well. We have four full day in-service dates for nine-twelve and four half day in-service dates with half day classes. That's an improvement over past practice. And one of those half days is the last day of school. And again, we have monthly in-service at the high school, with the exception of December and May. Start and end times, I'll refer you to the memo from Superintendent Olson on start and end times here. For the most part, they're status quo. We are adjusting, as I said, lengthening, uh, the school day for the high school by two minutes. So the proposal would be to start at seven fifty-five and run to three fifteen. For grade six-eight, we will be, we're proposing to move the start time to, from seven forty-five to three oh-five. For grade six-eight, again, that's a two-minute increase. And then for special drumming, fifth grade, uh, because of the grade configuration in that building, fifth grade would also record at seven forty-five and dismiss at two thirty-five, which is the same length of days in the past, but a slightly different start time, just a little bit later. And then, um, notes on summer school, we've discussed earlier in the evening, but as a, just as a reminder as well.
So you're, you're down to only one half day. That's, he's earned his pay. And you're, and you're down to, and, and you're up to having full day in services except for one half day. So you're, those two little glitches that, to finish that off, you're trying to retain full employment for next year to get that.
That's right. I don't want to bring it all forward.
Okay, and, uh, so, uh, and, and have we gotten, uh, and so the professional development is our internal or external? Are we cooperating with any schools, other schools?
We are, uh, we are partnering with Juana Key on, and Dane County Teacher Project on some professional development opportunities through our grant program. It's unrelated to calendar, but that's, but we are doing some collaboration there. I don't have other calendars from other schools coordinated with ours yet, although I do have conversations with my colleagues about how can we partner up on sharing time or sharing resources together.
My, my only other concern now, if we can just expand the summer school with the numbers, then it won't ask to expand the regular school beyond the, very close to the minimum number of hours. But I, I think, uh, you've heard me when I lobby you in the hallway that what we are buying is time. We're buying time and how we use time is very important. And I think these are, we, these are excellent improvements that slowly have come in. So you have a higher aspiration for next year?
The high school?
We'll develop that with the, with the group then.
Jeff?
So for, for start time, have we discussed, studied, or any discussions like was promised about the later start times and how it would be possible to do that?
Yeah, we certainly have talked about that and, and as you know, there's a couple of considerations. Okay, one is, you know, what the research says about that. And there's also parent convenience, to be honest, and also the other, you know, after-school activities and so on. So at this point, the minor adjustment that's being recommended for the GDS, clearly with the idea that, you know, later is better, that five minutes, so, you know, is about a, basically to, uh, transportation, to, you know, allow some more lead time there. Our thought about looking at a major change with that, we're in the process of this facilities, you know, study as well. And if we look at potential some changes there, we thought that would be a good time to, you know, if there were going to be changes. So to answer your question, no, we're not, we didn't do a formal study to come up with a proposal. We know what, basically what the research says and recommendation for this year's to stay basically status quo.
So can we do a, uh, community, or a parent survey to see? I think sometimes I think maybe parent convenience is, uh, not necessarily the, the factor that people think it is.
Personally.
So you're asking that, just for a survey to see what parents think about it? I think that you're like, thinking about-
Because I mean, one way or another, you're in convenience.
Right.
So, you know, now I just think-
If you want to have a curricular program after school, athletics and things like that, it should tie very much into that too.
Right.
Yeah, it definitely is.
Another question. With the, the recess thing at Condes Grove, has there any thought of adding like five more minutes at the end of the day to make sure that there is time for recess?
Yes, that was discussed and based upon principal recommendation, um, the recommendation is to stay to school for the length of the school day for this year.
Because the research also shows kids need a recess. Especially boys.
They need varied learning opportunities and opportunity. There's lots of ways of doing that.
Now, is there, is there a change? I guess it's a different discussion.
But length of the school is important. And, and where we're at, at the six hours and fifteen minutes, you know, for elementary schools, I would say is at least average, probably in some cases a little bit longer. There are elementary schools that have seven-hour, you know, days. And so that's something they said we had an initial discussion about. I think we need to spend more time on exactly how would those, you know, extra ten minutes or fifteen minutes be utilized? And what is, you know, with that? So, um, we're, we're pretty typical with our school day.
Right.
I, I will say this, I mean, well, getting off top a little bit, but with the recess as well, I mean, that's, we're pretty typical with what we have there as well. Most upper elementaries, you know, have a single recess at one time.
I would strongly encourage you to encourage a teacher to submit to healthy classrooms for a thousand-dollar grant and study one class doing it and one class not, and see if you can get any data on that. Because you could, that's exactly the kind of stuff that this medical school student group would like to know about and would like more information about. So encourage them to do that unless, I'll send you the stuff. And if, at the symposium, which is, I'm sorry, Susan.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Um, they'll actually sit down and help the staff write the grant right there.
As a proponent of later start times, I do think it makes sense to wait for the facilities to see where we're going to be at that one.
So, I, so I guess, yeah, it's not by any means off the table, it's something that we're cognizant of. And as you know, it's a big deal to make a change.
Right.
Do you get, do you get called? Have we gotten calls on that after the first week or two of when school started? Are people still concerned about it, or are they-
The start times?
Start times?
Um, well, here's what I've heard from the principals. I mean, anecdotally, it's, you hear from both parties. There are parents, because of work schedules, that would, um, some would like even earlier start times, so it's more convenient for them. some would like, you know, earlier start times, so it's more convenient for them, they can drop the, the children off on their way to work, and there are others that are concerned about, you know, being able, you know, the sleeping patterns and want later start times, so it's, it's both. Now, have we done a formal survey to find out exactly where all parents are? No, it's more anecdotal, so, um, have, I, have we heard much after the start of the year? I don't think so. Um, you know, but in talking to the principals, any change, of course, we're gonna get feedback.
There's some parents of like earlier start times and later finished times.
Yeah.
Right. So, that, um, that, the calendar and the start times will be on the agenda for the next February meeting for action, so it's just a representation, just a question. Any other comments on that? Okay, thank you. All right, then, uh, action items, and we have two. And first is discussion of possible approval of two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, so the current school year, collective bargaining agreement with the Menon Grove Education Association, Dan.
Yes, so, we're asking for approval, the, uh, MGA has already ratified this collective bargaining agreement, um, it is for the maximum allowed as far as base wages, uh, which is the CPI of one point four six percent, and the actual, that comes to a dollar amount of seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars per teacher, um, and you do have a spreadsheet that shows that, um, breakout for you, so, uh, the recommendation is approval of the collective bargaining agreement, which is essentially the base wage increase for the fourteen, fifteen.
So, could I have a motion?
No, move approval.
So, move approval of the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen collective bargaining agreement with the Menon Grove Education Association as presented, so, Dean, move down just a second.
Second.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And the next item is discussion and possible approval of teacher supplemental pay for two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, and Dan.
Okay, so, the proposal for supplemental pay would be something that's not bargained outside of the base wage, it can be bargained under current law, and the personnel committee did meet with MGA on several occasions in a meet and confer type setting to talk about, uh, the wages. Uh, what was budgeted for all staff for the current year was approximately a two percent salary increase, um, you know, support staff, administration, teachers, basically of, of the overall budget. And when you look at the teacher piece though, because the new hires are not included in this, what they were hired at is their, their pay, and so if you look at that because of turnover, it, that dollar amount, when you look at the teachers involved, actually came closer to, uh, was about a little over two point three, um, you know, percent that was available for that group of teachers. And so the discussion was about the distribution, okay? Do we give every teacher the same dollar amount? Do we look at various groups and differentiate? And in fact, what you have is a differential, you'll see on, on your handout, on the supplemental pays, they range from three hundred and thirty-one dollars for some groups, five hundred and thirty-one, eight hundred and thirty-one, and that was done with the idea of trying to create a more equitable salary, uh, for some of our teachers that, who had between particularly seven and twelve years of experience. You recall, um, the district, or the board has increased the starting pay fairly substantially over the last couple of years, but that leaves a lot of teachers who have had, you know, seven, eight, nine years of experience, essentially making the same salary as our beginning teachers. And so the idea to give a little bit larger boost to that group, um, and so, this was something that was done collaboratively with the MGA, it was really kind of a proposal that they looked at, um, support as well, and so with that, um, what you see are the actual dollar amounts, um, and I believe the actual total of supplemental is about a hundred and six thousand dollars, um, and, um, to distribute amongst that two hundred some teachers. So, I don't, do you miss anything?
Sounds good. Okay. So, so the, the number seems bigger, and there'll be people that will complain about the number, but it's really gonna, if you look at that, and if somebody's getting a three hundred and thirty-one dollar raise for a year, that's, that's not really a lot of money.
Yeah, well, it's plus the base, but you're right, it's still, no doubt about it.
Somebody's saying you guys have given this, all this extra money, like, I don't have a lot of extra money.
No question about it.
It's like, not even two bucks a day.
Yeah, so. I, I think, well, I'll speak for myself, um, without question, we wish we had more available to.
Right, no, I'm just saying, if anybody says you give us money, if you break it down, there's not a lot of money.
No, I mean, we're barely keeping up with cost of living.
Right.
And I, I think it, you know, it's bear, be reminded, our teachers' take-home pay is still less than it was pre-acting.
And a budget to be convinced.
Correct.
Weird how that.
So, could I have a motion to approve the supplemental pay for the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year as presented? Some move, say a second?
Second.
Second, move to the seconded. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, future agenda items, will be any comments?
Can I ask any question on that?
On this?
You, on the previous one? Um, you, you used a meet and confer?
We did.
So, the, so the discussions were, were, uh, with teachers in the room and that sort of thing?
Yes.
Uh, that, how did that work?
I don't, very well, we had a couple of meetings where we actually divided it up into two parts, one was, uh, a bargaining session, and then we, I think we might even notice it as a separate meeting.
We did, we noticed them separate.
Yeah, as a meet and confer session, and so, uh, yeah, I thought it went really well, um, and I think the other commitment we've made is to start those, um, right away again now, and be, sit away until after the budget's developed, and, you know, in the spring.
I actually attended one of those, and these guys were saying, doesn't she have anything better to do, but the fact was, it was really, really well done, and I thought that it was a very thoughtful presentation, and the teachers actually ran the full first hour and provided significant input, um, and then, when they started to speak with the committee, they were already integrated, which was, again, I was real, I was really impressed with how it went, and, um, just sitting back observing and watching it, um, interact, um, I was impressed with the collaboration that was occurring, especially in that environment.
I'm very glad that we got over the, this harsh distinction of bargaining and not talking type possibilities of that, you know, I think it was very good.
All right, then, back to, uh, future agenda, does anyone have anything, Jared? We're kinda keeping a list, I guess, if not, uh, future meetings, we have a long-range planning committee again on February seventeen, and the next board meeting is February twenty-fifth, and the rest of these meetings are listed.
Um, the policy.
Oh, well, there's a, oh, policy will not be.
Yep. We rescheduled to March four.
Yeah, we rescheduled, it won't be March four, 'cause it is here, it's March, whatever it is.
Sixteenth, sixteenth.
Sixteenth, right. Sixteenth, I think.
You're right, we did schedule a March personnel.
It's, uh, March ninth, which is in Monday.
Personnel, March nine.
Sorry, do I assess my phone?
And then, for policy, I actually had us for six P.M., is that what?
Yeah, we had it six P.M., and we, we also scheduled our assembly at daytime, I think, on March.
Yeah, we did, and I don't know where I put that.
And, just as a suggestion, uh, we had a very good report on the finances of the district and on summer school, I suggest that we get those wrapped up in one page, one side, or at least front and back, of one sheet of paper, and, uh, because that, that, if you want to appropriate time, I, I think it, that's the kind of thing that explains what's happening, and, you know, you can, you can add some, edit, say editorial comment, but what the impact would be on that, on that sort of thing, and I think that, uh, it ought to be up on our website too, because, uh, 'cause I, I think, uh, I just think that Jared's was very illuminating, and I think, in my judgment, we're slowly moving forward to, on, on summer school to, uh, expand opportunities, rather than have it simply be short-term or immediate.
All right, uh, then I would have a question to turn, just a second.
Whose holes is this?
Uh, mine, you don't want to worry. You, you come to do that, I think, wasn't it?
No, I have some.
Okay, so wait, somebody moved to adjourn.
Peter did.
Peter did, was there a second, Jessica, all is in favor, some of you were saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. adjourned.
Gotcha.
Did we do that twice?
Black.
Black.
Yeah, the chances of it.
Black.
Please, please.
Yeah, I found that typo.
Okay, thank you, said to sit back.